I'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So roll call in attendance, we have Bob, Ed, Carol, and myself, and Doug is running a few minutes late. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Madam Chairman, could we add an agenda item being the 2026 budget? And specifically, I'd like to go to the email that Laura sent all of us about the three options for the...
Reserve.
Yes, about the reserves and the three options. And I'd like to have some discussion about how the board feels about each one of those options.
Where would you want to add it?
Well, any suggestions?
Only places nine E.
Don't do anything, Tony.
Just talk, their voice activated.
Okay. My only comment is, I think from the standpoint, since the budget hearing's at six, any discussion the board has now should also be conducted at the time of the budget hearing, because a lot of people may not be here now that want to review and comment and also on the board discussion on that. So having it twice is not...
Well, I don't think that those three options had been on any agenda previously. And so I think we should look at them and discuss them as a board.
I think what he's saying is if we do it now, no big deal, but we have to have the same discussion again at six o'clock.
You've got to do it again.
That's not our problem.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah. Having it twice is not a problem, but just want to make sure that the public has an opportunity that would not be here, it's not going to be here until six to comment on it at the budget hearing. So doing it twice is great.
Do you want to do it as 11B?
Yeah, that's what it should be, 11B.
Can we do it 11B?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me. All right, so then I need a motion.
Yeah.
Motion by Carol, second by Ed. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a motion for, except Doug, and due to exceptional circumstances?
He's not on.
Oh, he's not online?
No.
Well, then we'll reject him.
So, public comment.
I have one, just from Rod Senior. He won't be able to be here for the public hearing, so he would like to make his comments at this time.
Yeah, and then you'll make his comments part of the record at the public hearing.
We will read it back or reiterate, I guess.
If you have something you're going to read off of, if you want to leave it with me, I can reread it during the public hearing.
Scribbled all over it, but I will send you a copy.
Okay. And yeah, I can read that during the hearing then.
Excuse me? For my...
I haven't started your time yet, so you're good.
Please, yeah, thank you. I'm clumsy today.
Casual Thursday, Rod.
Casual. Right. Rod Senior, Gateway Greens, "Two meetings ago, I distributed this handout, which shows 2% Lee County inflation in their taxes compared with our increase from $806 in 2023 to $1,308 in 2026, which is 17% compounded each year. Your stated goal two meetings ago was to reduce the 13% high watermark down to 10%. But 10% is simply not okay. It's way above 2.5% CPI. I oppose the latest 2023 bond of 55 million, bond of which you've already issued 11.7 million. I think you've been spending excessively on the new admin building. $17 million has already been spent on Pond Bank restoration. These two debt service items alone are $312, which is 25% of our total assessment of $1,308, and it's growing to 351 in 2027. Here's a suggestion. Stephen Blum's a good guy. Why don't you think about using him as a financial controller instead of an accountant? The difference being, of course, the financial controller controls you before you spend it, as opposed to an accountant who tells you after it's too late. Tell him you want to keep your spending growth to 2% going forward and to keep you in check every month. That way, you'll be facing the resonance next year with a pleasing 2% increase plus 3% debt service, which is what it is. That's 5% instead of 10%. Going forward, please look for ways to save money and generate revenues. Landscaping, why do we only have one bidder for a $900,000 cost center? Pond Bank Restoration, are you looking for less expensive methods for doing this other than Armamax and Stone? Gateway Commons, how about a user fee model for all the facilities up there that are growing? Pickleball, I'm sure you're going to charge people to use it, so at the same time, charge people for using the pool. It's a good time, good opportunity to do that. Now Pelican Preserve are paying towards this, I think you should be interested in doing that. Sherman Soccer Complex, currently getting 150,000 a year rent out of the half million it's costing us to maintain it. But the end user fees paid by the families with these 800 kids and the GSA, for example, are not coming to the district, they're going to the GSA. We just get rent. The GSA annual user fee is 350 a year, so how about us getting involved in some of that revenue? Here are different ideas for this business model. Form a joint venture with the users, mainly GSA and...
Two, three minutes.
Okay, can you give me one more minute?
Flavia, I mean, Rod.
I'll try and rush through this last minute. Suggestions, form a joint venture with the end users like Flag Football and the GSA. Or have the district hire a sports director and do it ourselves, so we get the user fees. How about we broaden our amenities to include softball, lacrosse, running track, et cetera, to get more Gateway homes involved? Right now, it's only 5% of homes who have kids that live here. Reduce the service level back to two fields like it was in 1998. Or transfer ownership to Lee County and don't give up on that, because it's the right thing to do. Finally, I'll just say this sentence. Everything in those days when we started this, and you remember, Tony, the days of Lee Menzies and Jim Wood, all this was driven by Roger Sherman, who was the CSA guy, he was the CSA, wasn't even on the board. Everything was driven by him as the sole master user. The tail was wagging the dog, and I think that that's what's happening today, and I think the district should take a control of this half million dollars we're blowing on this facility and think of a better way to do it.
Thank you, Rod.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Local achievements, do you have anything?
I just want to call out, Randy did receive, just this week, his Florida Certified Contracts Manager certification. That was a free course that was offered by the state, and so as part of his rewriting job duties last year, that was one that we wanted to make sure we push our employees to expand their skills, so.
All right, so advisory committees and items to report, we have...
You know that Mr. Banks is here.
I talked with him.
I did, I already did.
I gotta go stand in the corner for 15 minutes.
Unscapped.
Eyes against the wall.
All right, Prak.
They haven't met, but there is the Back to School Bash this Saturday from, I think it's 10 to 2. It will be at the pool. We'll have, oh, there we go, sorry. Yep, perfect. And Prak, I think they'll start meeting next week, they'll start reconvening, they took a summer hiatus, like most of our advisory committees do, so.
Any questions on Pelican Preserve report?
I thought it was very comprehensive.
Approval of minutes?
So moved on agenda item eight, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Motion in a second, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda.
Move on to consent agenda items nine, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
I have a motion in a second on consent agenda items eight, nine, A, B, C, and D. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. District engineer.
Stephen Agapi is online.
Eric's on too.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. For the task authorization update, irrigation pump station generator, the concrete pad was poured last week. It's reached sufficient strength, and they're tentatively planning to install the diesel storage tank next week with FDEP and Lee County on site. They're also working on electrical improvements. The irrigation enforcement improvement project, we received word last week that SRF did approve that project for SRF funding. However, we are still working through HMGP grant application for a portion of that project. So until we hear back from HMGP, that project's on hold right now, but the good news is we do have the option to use SRF funding for the entire project.
Stephen, let's pause right there for a second. So you may have noticed on our website, it was posted today, we are this close to receiving that HMGP funding. Because it is federal funding, we had to do a 15-day notice, a public notice, seeking any feedback response, so that's posted on our website and also in our office. We are hoping to get, I think it's a little over $3 million on that grant. It does require a 25% match. They don't fund the irrigation side of that project, which is why we pursued the SRF, but we are looking to have the sewer completely funded.
What's the HMGP mean?
Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's the same one that we applied for, for the Pelican ponds. 25% local match.
Aye. Aye, Stephen.
All right. Lower Hawthorne well, that project is wrapping up. I think the only thing we need left there is sod, some minor work on the above-ground piping, and then we can close out permits, so that should be removed from this project list at the next meeting. Gateway's utility storage building, that project is wrapping up also. There's minor punch list items, and we're closing out permits also. FY24 lakes, these ones are nearing completion, there's a couple of items on each of the lakes that MRI has to do as part of the punch list, and we can close those out. FY25 lake bank construction management, these ones are also wrapping up with minor punch list items. Lake bank restoration HMGP, we are in preliminary design of this project. This is grant-funded. The Public Works Building Relocation, Eric's on right now, but from my understanding is we're working through design right now, and then we're going to be moving into permitting. The Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building, the contractor is working on the foundation and footers. They are also working on site grading and sanitary sewer in different parts of the The FWA Bulk Meter Assembly is complete, all the punch list items have been wrapped up, so we're closing that one out. CCTV sewer, they have inspect, the contractor has inspected approximately like 98% of the sewer mains, and we've reviewed almost all of those. We're still waiting for them to complete the manhole inspections. The CCTV storm project, the contractor is, still has a lot of work left to do, but we're reviewing the information as we get it. As for development updates, Harborwood Phase Three, the contractor has asked us to go check some of the punch list items this week, which we will be doing. Daniels Parkway Apartments, they resubmitted their fifth submittal, which we are currently reviewing right now. I'm going to skip Santa Luis for a second. Garrett FM is still, they're in vertical construction right now, as everyone can see. Utilities are getting to the end, they're working on lift station. And for Santa Luis, Chelsea or Tony, do you want to give the board an update on this project?
Yeah, it's a brief update. We received a response today from the council for Lennar US Home, but we've not had time to digest it analyzer. We're having a staff team meeting tomorrow to go over that, then we'll make recommendations to the board and we'll respond as back.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for us?
I think I had one other item, but it might have been on the consent agenda, hold on a second.
That it was approved.
Of course, I had, was...
I thought the project down there on the apartments, I think it's Garrett, I thought that building was five stories. It's only four.
I'm pretty sure it's...
Is it 257, correct? Because I recall, because I thought it was strange, I'd never heard of a five-story...
I think it's 256.
256?
I'm pretty sure it's 256.
But it's only four stories.
Five units, four, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, five buildings, four stories, 256 units.
Because I was of the opinion it was five stories high, and it ain't five stories high, it's only four.
Could that be related to the collapse over in Miami, that when you get above a certain height?
Well, this is even more, well, this one won't have that structural deal with concrete, because there ain't no concrete. It's all wood.
Wood, yeah. Termites.
No, it might be tied into...
I don't think they're willing to eat that.
There might be a lot of toothpicks over there in Lehigh when the wind blows it away, but...
It might be tied into fire code requirements when you hit a 75-foot level, you have different fire suppression and sprinkling ring, etc. requirements.
Well, I was just surprised.
When you hit 75, that's when it changes.
I saw them going up, when they got to four, they started to put the roof gables on. Is this, this isn't going five? Okay.
Anything else for Stephen?
No.
Okay, okay. Hey, Stephen.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Hey, Steve.
District manager items.
Nope, you skipped over admin.
I did?
Yeah.
I made a bunch of notes on it and skipped on it, okay.
So, this first one, I wanted to bring it in front of you for your decision. We have connection fees that are tied to the admin building. Obviously, if we process these, the enterprise fund will be paying itself 59%, Pelican would be paying 14%, and then the general fund would be paying the 27%. So we did pay the fees to the county, which I think those were a couple thousand dollars, but these are mainly for sewer irrigation and potable, and I wanted to know if you wanted to waive those fees for our own project, or if you wanted me to charge it to the project itself.
I don't know if I want to start waiving fees. We have a policy, and if we have to pay, as a deal, we pay.
I don't care.
I agree with that, too.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. All right, perfect. Well, you will process accordingly. Thank you.
Are we going to have other connection fees, other than the building?
There are no other...
They're all there included, right?
I mean, any of the other park amenities going to have to have bathrooms or something
that we'd have to have other connection fees?
No, all of that's tied into the water and sewer connection fees here.
Okay, okay.
It mainly ties to the, how many meters you have in ERUs. 11B, we have the items, the budget.
Yes. I asked that this be put on here. Laura had sent to all of us an email outlining three options that could be used in the 2026 budget. We, as a board, have not had opportunity to discuss these prior to the public hearing tonight and then the final adoption of the budget at some point this evening. So I was wondering what the thoughts are about, of my fellow board members about each of these three options.
Carol, would you like Laura to briefly go over each option, or...
Yes, could you?
Okay.
Okay, so the first one with the yellow, what I did is, the board had originally said that they wanted to fund the reserves at a total of 279,000, which is the same as what we did for fiscal '25. So I played around with the numbers. This is, as it stands, is first under zero, so this is without doing anything. This is funding reserves at 279,000, no offset, no carryforward. If we were to use the 140,000, because I was tasked to get it under 10, so I figured 9.9 is under 10, so I got it to 9.9.
There's a little bit difference between the email and this. Numbers. See, the emails have a different, a little, it's slightly different than what we...
That was 150 point.
I do, too. This is...
So it went down? What did you have to...
I probably changed it.
I just need to know which one.
This is 12.1 on the screen, and this is 12.7 on the email.
What did you reduce?
And it's 9.4 over here, and it's what, 9.4?
There's a reduction on everything.
What you're showing is more favorable, but...
I just want to know which one it is.
We need to know.
All right, let's do, let's do this.
Street sweeping? Was that the big difference?
Oh, we had the street sweeping after that, yeah.
Yeah, that's why. So we went back in double-checking, the, Bob had requested that we look at potentially leasing or procuring a street sweeper. It's not the value that that would cost to what we pay, it's not worth it, but as part of that, it triggered, hey, we need to double-check that number in the budget, and so it...
The budget incorrectly listed the contract price at $47,000 for the year for Gateway, and it's actually only 11. So that was $36,000 less, yeah.
Good job, Bob, you saved us almost 30 grand indirectly, but...
I do have the most recent one, which I will pull, I'll pull up all my live files during the meeting, but since we, this was in the agenda packet, we'll, but the concept is the same regardless, they're close within a couple, with tenths of a percent. So that was, that was the yellow one. So then I did, just to try to get it around like nine and a half.
So you're saying that of the 279 in reserves, if we take 170?
No, this would be fund the reserves, take 170,000 out of the capital reserves or the carryforward or something, so we're still going to fund the reserves at 279,000 and use, so basically, you're taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other, but we would fund the reserves at 279. Sound familiar, Bob? And then use, put 140,000 of the carryforward to help offset. Or the same, if we did 170,000 of carryforward, it would reduce it down to about 9.4.
You explained it better than I did.
And then this is the same concept here.
Can I just ask you one question?
Yep.
And I may have missed this. What is the total carryover?
Don't know. Or I, that would be a Stephen question, that would be a Stephen question.
We have, so the FY24 was like 1.1, but we had to remove the, what do we call it, unfi, or unrealized projects?
Yeah, yeah.
So we removed that. I think we were at like 800?
800 and something.
From there. And then this current fiscal year, we have very, very, like $30,000, $30,000-foot view, maybe, what, 800?
Maybe, yeah, but there's still, Stephen worked up, the copy Stephen worked up.
I was going, it's still a big...
What's the total available?
I called and told them, I said, I'll vote for this and go with it with one stipulation, and that is, the first thing that comes out of the retained earnings, I hate using the word carryover, the retained earnings, is it's dedicated back to repay this.
Well, it just automatically goes back to the capital reserve, is that what you're saying?
It's paid in by the people, it goes back to the people.
I agree with that.
So, moving, moving on.
Okay, so the, the blue is same concept, except I funded the reserves only at $100,000 instead of $279,000, and then went for the same target to get it down to just under 10, and then at 9.4, but it also reduced the assessments without making any changes, obviously, because that's $179,000 less that we were going to assess, so that, that dropped the regular number right there. And then the last one would be to put nothing in reserves, and I tried also, since we started out at 9.6, I went down to nine and then eight and a half, and that would be what we would need to use. And so to Ed's point, if we were to use carryforward, we would just skim these numbers right off the top for 26, and that would just go in from there. So the 40, or whatever, whatever dollar amount you guys decide that you want to do, that would just come right off the top.
So I had, I had some residents ask me, they saw that 4% deal, and I don't think what they understand is that the county, when you pay, if you pay early, you're subject to a 4%. Well, what if 50% of Gateway doesn't pay early? Well, what they don't realize is that that is going to essentially go to a retained earning.
Correct.
And that's why I say, I have no problem with doing this, I think it makes, it's a good idea, but with the stipulation that when we get that retained earning in, it supplements that that we took out. Not higher, but equal to.
Can you go back up to option one? So 270 is the funding reserve. Then we will leverage the carryforward. What's, the 170 was that number that just...
I just pulled it to try to get it to like nine and a half percent, so...
So my point is, there's no threshold on that number, on the 170, other than what you just decided.
Just pick the number.
Yep, I just tried to get it close, close to nine and a half percent increases, I could, I actually calculated it all the way...
She could have picked 160, or 150, or 180.
I calculated it all the way up to like, yeah.
Or 300, or 400.
Yep.
Well, how close does the 270 come to what the last study we had suggested?
Minimum.
I know, it's below what they were suggesting. That's, that's my point.
Bare bones.
Even at 270, we're not, no, we're not, we ought to be a lot higher. Now, if we could routinely take the carryforward monies and put it in, well, then the yearly contribution would be a heck of a lot better.
Great.
Because we got to get those reserves up, we, I mean, we really need to do that.
Considering we spend them throughout the year.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, that's my, my deal on it, is I, I, I'm not opposed to doing, doing this, just with the understanding that you stop kicking the can down the road, put the money back in. And like you said, the money we're putting in and doing is a pittance to begin with.
So I will caveat...
Ed, do you like yellow, blue, or green?
I don't care.
They're pretty much all the same.
Does it make a difference? They're, they're all supreme.
I mean, I'm fine with yellow.
Yeah, so am I.
The, the yellow seems to be the simple way.
Yeah. I mean, my only point was...
Flavia, you feel that way, too?
The thing being, is that enough, instead of looking at percentages, should we be looking at dollars?
See, that's, that was a conversation that I have with Chelsea. We're so focused on, on percentages and...
Instead of looking at dollars.
10% of a million dollars is a lot more than 10% of $100, but it's still 10%. So, you know, we're, everyone's so focused on the percent, and I think we should look at the, but...
That's what I, that's what I was looking to.
But it's your call, so...
It's not enough, we know that, and, and I think we should look at the dollar, not at the percentage.
So I will caveat that this, this, to make all of this work with the 140-plus thousand-dollar carryforward, will require us to use some of the interest earnings on the capital stuff for the capital projects.
Funds, yeah.
The bonds. So whatever capital earnings, interest earnings we've made off of that, those monies sitting in that bank account.
But isn't that tied?
Yes, it has to be tied.
They have to be used to the construction, yes.
So to me, and we, this carryover is an interesting thing, unrealized. So normally what happens is we go through this budget, and we come up with a number. And then post, we, we understand what the unrealized, or, and that just becomes additional funding dollars that we didn't earmark, most of the times, we don't earmark, and it just becomes like almost a slush fund.
Piggyback.
Yeah, piggyback. Is that, and I'd love to get Stephen's input on this, is that the most physical responsible thing to do? Or is there a way, because basically, that, that dollars becomes, it impacts the next year physical, the next physical year's budget, so we're able to spend and reduce costs on that forward year. But what we're trying to do is fund for next year and manage the assessment today, or, you know, in that, so we want to get this as low as we possibly can. So is it, are we doing, are we doing the correct, are we following the correct procedure with unrealized earnings being pushed to the next physical year? Or should we be looking to offset the next year's budget in more of a formal process? So, you know, if that number is, let's just 170, what's stopping us from, from raising that to 300 or, or 4, and putting that money back into, into the budget? I know we don't have that number specifically, but I, I just don't know the, what's best.
What's bothering me is, is that we're sitting here getting a headache over $2 a week.
Yeah.
I mean, this is ridiculous.
But it's, it's optics, you know, it's really what we're managing to right now, it's just...
What I would suggest is, if you choose to do the yellow, one of the things that we have not, and the general fund have not leveraged as much as Pelican has in their fund, is stacking investments in T-bills and having them come, you know, earn money over time. You could take this money, and we invest it, we don't put this much in, but Pelican does a lot more, and they've made money over the years. This could be an investment that you could say, whatever we incur, we want to use to offset costs in the future.
And when I, when I said optics, I didn't mean that in a belittling way, I mean, because I mean, because every dollar means something to people. All of us up here too pay assessments, and we'd like our assessment to be as low as possible.
I don't think it's so much the dollars. I think it's that, what Laura said, it's that percentage. It, it just scares people. 12%, 9%, but when you do it back, what is it, $2 a week?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, give me a break. Some of these people smoke that in a day.
Chelsea had talked about interest. I'm looking at my, just in the general fund bond account, so far through, I think it was through the end of July, we have a little over a million dollars in interest that we've earned. So, that's money that we can use to-
Last year, did really well.
Pay for, to pay for projects.
Yeah, did really well.
Bond projects, yeah.
My thing is, take it, take it to the people, do what Carol brought out, wanted to do, is at least get everybody's comment. But I think everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. I mean, again, I know some people would argue that-
Okay, so we like yellow?
Yellow, I think.
Yellow.
We like 140 or 170?
I like the 170.
Just go to the, again.
Okay.
Surely, again, I'll say from an optics perspective, I like 9.4 even better than 9.9, even though it's a percentage, not the dollar, doesn't, you're only talking about a couple bucks, but, you know.
Laura, do you need to make changes in your paperwork for the public hearing then?
Nope, those I can do on the fly, so, yeah.
Well, in, in between, if, if this meeting convenes early, or if we recess early, she can do those.
So if we, if we do that, and we take this option, the Gateway single family total will drop from 1306 by 11171, is that correct?
It'll go-
What, what at 1306 before we started this?
I'm opening up my budget, give me just a second. I think it was like 150, I want to say, well, it would have been 14451 going down to 111, so it was like $33.
134522 was the assessment before we started this.
Right.
So what we're saying is, is that that will be deducted by 11171. So we're now down to, uh, 1233.
I have the $100,000, and so I have to go back and change the reserves.
Well, we'll-
Everybody just got their taxing deals. So they're going to be adding their tax, Carol even brought hers, adding their tax and adding this number. And that's what we're going to be hearing tonight, is, is that I'm, I'm at 6,000, I'm at $8,000. You're going to hear it, it is what it is.
Yeah, but we don't have any influence over the other.
Yeah, and again, what I would suggest is that this detailed discussion occur at the budget hearing also. Or Laura can, or Chelsea can introduce the topic, and then Carol can raise the questions she raised. And Chelsea and Laura want to sort of do a brief summary as to what was discussed and what the considerations were, and the board can further discuss it for the benefit of the public and what the impacts are, just so that they can have a full opportunity to comment on it.
The problem is, Tony, 99% of the community is not going to have a clue what you're talking about, carry forward.
I, I understand, but I think it's important again for those who are going to attend, so they understand how they can comment on the budget.
I, I, I think what we're doing is saying is, we're, we're taking your money, and we're giving a part of it back, but that that's left over at the end of the year, we're going to use it to replenish what we gave you back. It's that simple.
Just a couple other things while Laura's crunching her numbers. Just a couple of the changes, I'm going to go over them real quick while you're doing that. From the last time you saw it to what, what was posted in the budget. The street sweeping, we mentioned that, that went down to $11,000. We took the employee funding that you, you said for me a look at how to address employees and merits and things like that. We reduced that to $75,000, it was 100, we took that down to 75. The auditor, where we had the insurance issue, the Grau and Associates, the second auditor, was a little bit more expensive than the one that we had originally went, so we had to adjust that line item. And then, like I mentioned earlier, about using the interest earnings to help offset the costs for the capital projects that we have underway. So those are, those are the, the four really big things. And then obviously Pelican made their opinion on, on recommendations, so any of those edits were incorporated as well.
And you'll repeat all this at the budget hearing?
Of course.
Please.
Yes, Laura actually will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to hear a discussion.
Hi, District Manager Idens.
We have the monthly reports. So with that, does any, Laura's up first for admin.
Anybody hit, stop? Nothing?
I asked her to stop giving us the time sheets. Until we have the discussion about what we really should be doing, what we're getting is wasting everybody's time. My opinion.
Anything for admin? Anything for Public Works?
The only thing I had was, is that Paul called me this morning, and he and the contractor vendor was out going along at least the golf course, looking at that. And that was very satisfying to know that at least that's going to be taken care of. I think it just comes back to the issue, though, that why does it always continue just to continue that we have to put out a fire? We need to be watching these vendors. They're not doing their job.
We are, Ed. I think this one was the timing where we had opened the weers a week or so ago. The water levels were higher, they dropped down and exposed everything that was under the water.
Makes it look a lot worse, that's for sure.
Exactly, so you want to go ahead, Paul?
Yes, lowering the water level did, you know, put some highlight to the issue. But I'm with you, we'll manage the contractor a lot more aggressively, I guess, and just try to keep tabs as far as their performance, and making sure that they're doing what we expect of them as well.
But I do appreciate you and Rod reaching out and bringing those items to our attention.
And then the other item I, I did get from a couple of residents in the community is, is that they're, they're a little bit smarter than I gave them credit for. They're seeing that we're reducing the water level. And I said, what's, what's that bubbling at the weir? And I said, that's the reducing the water level. Their question was, is, and they're getting the reality that when you take the water level down a foot, it goes out four feet. And if you're on a six-to-one slope, it goes out six feet. And now all of a sudden, it's, it's panic. Are we going back and heading back to August, or not August, earlier summer, to where the ponds were down to where you could walk across them?
April, May type.
They didn't, they don't want that, so they're, they're petrified. And, but to tell them that, hey, there's, there's hurricanes coming, the last thing we want to do is to be at controlled elevation and have a hurricane, because we have no place to put the water.
That's exactly right.
Our people are noticing the same thing.
But they're noticing the water levels going down, so I, I guess the question is, is to, to what level are we going? Are we just going to go one foot below control and that's it? Or are we going to take it down more than that?
We're just honestly watching the, watching the radar, you know, the conga line of storms that are out there, and, and trying to reduce, you know, any scare, just what, just two weeks ago, Sanibel had 12 inches of rain in, in 12 hours on a random Sunday.
People do not understand that.
Mother Nature's been strange this year, but-
Well, I know-
The water's missing us.
I know we did the drop, and we were going to be measuring how much we could get out, how quickly. Have we determined that, that if you drop it 50%, you'll-
We're still working on that calculation.
Okay.
We'll share that with the board, but give us some time.
Well, it was pretty effective, Bob, because we were at, we were at control, and it dropped about a foot down pretty, pretty quickly.
It was, it was over two, two and a half, two, three days.
People noticed it in Pelican right away also. Everyone's looking.
But the key to that, it was on, we were only halfway open.
Right, we didn't go all the way down.
Yeah.
But it was a control test to see what you got, what's the benefit for dropping it 50%, 75, whatever.
My, my point was, is that the, the people are watching it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're watching it.
And we didn't do Pond 38, and we probably need to do an independent check there also, since that's our one area of vulnerability.
Yeah.
Okay, the only other thing I had for Paul was a question. I know we're trying to get the mold off of the bridge between Prado and Pistoia, and I understand there were some challenges to doing that from an environmental point of view, that we don't mix chemicals in the flow, et cetera. Have we made any progress on just taking the water from the flowway, putting it through a pump, and blasting it that way?
Well, I'm still working on that, and I do apologize, I should have had a status, or a better status for today, but it's still a work in progress on my part, I do apologize for that.
And dropping the weers brought it back up again. I got calls again, hey, you said you were going to do that, have you? So, yeah, I would appreciate some follow-up.
Without a doubt.
And I didn't see it on the list, so.
Work on it.
Looking good to me.
All right, anything else for Paul? All right, and-
One, one question. How are our inspections, I already hit Billy on this, because he was out in the neighborhood. How are our inspections going relative to storm sewer TVs, cameras? Are we getting any surprises of damages or long-term problems that we got to fix on our storm sewer system?
On, on the storm water, yes, we've identified one major issue that we're trying to, Tech Tech is reviewing the video. Also, what, what can be done to make those repairs? But there's only one major one that, or one that I'm a little concerned about.
Where's that at?
The village of Stony Brook, yes. The village, yeah, the village of Stony Brook, I'm sorry.
They have.
Uh, one of the inlets, it's, have a water infiltration into one of the inlets, and it's pretty, pretty substantial, or it's concerning on our part.
Infiltration into a storm sewer?
From groundwater, yes, that's correct.
Fractured pipe, or cracked pipe or something?
It's just a seam that needs to be probably resealed.
I would be a little bit more concerned about that if it was into a sanitary sewer, but into a storm sewer, it's where the water ends up anyway.
Don't you worry, Bill's got his handful of those.
Yeah, but you get sediment too, that's the other part of it.
But outside of that, it, it, there are some minor issues here and there, but things that are manageable.
So, so we haven't had any disaster surprises?
No.
Great.
Knock on wood, that's correct.
Great, great.
Are we 100% inspected now by CC?
No.
No, no, we just started that a few months ago, and the, the weather's been the biggest delay on that part. So we're hoping to kind of regain some grounds during the dry season.
The Pelican experience was, when you checked it, it really doesn't move or change much if you keep your catch basin clean.
That helps.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything for Mr. Shaw?
I already picked his brain earlier this week.
He caught me on the street.
Oh, man.
Although we had one that we found out there, that he came out, and thank God the guys, when they come out, when I call and I have a problem, boy, I, they're there instantly. We got to watch this, because I talked to my landscaping people, they didn't touch that. But what it is, is we got a blow-off valve on our irrigation system. And the other day, the water was pouring out of that thing like crazy. So somebody had been into that green box, which is on our side of the meter, and had turned that little, what is it, two-inch?
Uh, half-inch.
Half-inch?
Yeah.
It's on a two-inch line.
It's on a two, it comes off of a two-inch line.
And turned that valve, and when you turn that valve, and that thing activates and is under pressure, a hell of a lot of water comes out. And it was flooding the area, so I'd never heard of that happening as long as I've been here, that anybody was first smart enough to even know what the hell it was, let alone to go in and operate it.
Right.
But, but the guys found it, and problem solved, but it could have been a lot worse.
Someone had to go in there and turn it on.
Somebody had to turn it on.
You need to monitor it?
Well, we need some fire ants, and we'll stick them inside that pit. Next time they'll get bit.
Give us a lift, list of what pits you do that to ahead of time, please? So we can be prepared.
Anything for-
Put a piranha inside that pit.
Anything for Bill?
Well, same question, and he, he already told me, but we, we had a sanitary sewer, I guess, issue on the cameras that came up down around, uh, FBI building.
The south roundabout, the FBI building area.
Doesn't sound like we have any major issues, which, you know, you take a sanitary sewer system, it's been in the ground 30, 35 years, like we've got, and you're not finding anything, uh-
We just started.
Yeah.
Knock on wood, that's pretty dang good.
Stage one, so, yeah.
That's pretty good.
Taking it to their-
That's good news.
Our, our ground, it's not real firm.
Yeah. So they're, they're in the 90%. 94% of the review, so we're getting close to getting our full report back. And-
Recommendations.
And recommendations for repairs. For repairs, and so hopefully we'll have that by the next, you know, board meeting or the following month after that.
And then just real quick on the Stony Brook master lift station odor control unit.
That unit has been replaced, the new one, the, the larger one is in place. We had a data logger hanging in the discharge of the new unit for the last, I believe, 10 days. We got a preliminary report yesterday that it has read zero hydrogen sulfide in the discharge of that unit for the entirety of the time that it had been there.
Spitballing here.
So no more smell?
For now, yes. We believe so now.
For now.
Other day in the paper, there was an interesting article. 147, as I remember, 147 million dollars. City of Fort Meyer was talking about putting in direct injection to be able to be able to pump 15, 18, 20 million gallons of water a day, 1,000 feet into the ground. We're sitting here withdrawing water out of our community. And why wouldn't they want to pump that water that they want to pump into the ground, which is very expensive? Pump it over here and put it into our wastewater treatment plant and solve our problem? So it'd have been treated.
It depends on what that water is, first, because I know-
My only question is, is somebody looking at that? Why are you taking and, a valuable commodity, which right now we're, what, 40%, 50% relying on groundwater?
This past month.
We could take that water, put it into our wastewater treatment plant, and stop withdrawing water out of the community, and they would stop injecting water into the community. I thought I saw about five, six, eight years ago, there was an 18-inch or a 24-inch forest main coming out 82. Where the hell was that thing going? I thought that was an irrigation line. Why couldn't it be converted to a line that you just pump treated water out here to our treatment plant?
That would be something that we would have to talk to the city of Fort Myers.
County and the city.
If I was city of Fort Meyer, I'd be looking at that as an option to get rid of, or better yet, pump it across the Kaluza Hatchie into the Cape where they need it. But pumping it into the ground is just, I don't get that at all.
When they built that line that you're talking about, Ed, one of the things that was supposed to happen is, Pelican was supposed to be using it. We're not, you know, we're eight years later, it's still not anywhere near connected to it.
That's even another alternative, since you're in the city.
But in the future-
Pump that water out and dump it into one of your lakes.
In the future, it's supposed to be happening. I don't know when, we don't have a date, we've talked to them a couple of times about it.
But in the meantime, they're going to spend 147 million dollars?
I know some, some of the water that gets injected doesn't meet the requirements to be able to be reused. And that's why it gets deep well-injected, because that way it's, it's gone, so.
I just sat there and looked at it, and I thought, man, I don't know who's giving them engineering advice, but, uh, they must have got their license at Sears. That just does not make sense at all.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Shaw? All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Where are we at, Disney World?
Who's Poppin' the Weasel? That's Ferrazaka.
Thought it was Small World.
Isn't that Ferrazaka, we're having French lessons?
Okay.
Carol looked guilty.
It was me.
So, we're all done with monthly reports?
Yes.
Does your get 30?
If you can blow that up a little bit larger, please.
Yep, I'm working on it.
Thank you, appreciate it. I, I'll go through the ones that, I think we have some time, time for getting items done. The, again, the utility software agreement termination provisions, we still haven't finalized that, to my knowledge. Correct, or have we?
We did.
On the term, the three-year term, okay. Those software companies have typical phrasing and termination provisions that are not very friendly, but it's typical in the industry, unfortunately. Auditor contract requirements, that's been finalized, worked with staff on that. Daniels Parkway, as Chelsea mentioned, there's resubmital. Staff responses and to that are due the 29th of August, so that it can be on the board meeting agenda September 18th. At least, we just received those. And again, it's a matter, we have the agreements pretty finalized, it's just the exhibits need to be finalized for those agreements. And it'll all be part of the package when we come back to the board, hopefully with a recommendation for approval with conditions. Those agreements, we part of it and finalize to get moving. On the quick claim deed, that was prepared and finalized, and we also have, and I appreciate Chelsea's assistance on this, a quick claim assignment of the dedication for landscape and monument signs at the entrance, and they'll come down to the board at the next board meeting, because we'd like to have that in the minute so that people go back in time and say, when did you accept this? We'll say, here it is. So there's no question as to the acceptance by the district. So that'll take care of that issue. Stony Brook Roads Streets, the reason I'm saying, I know, Chelsea wants to hide, we've had these, with the 99.99999 percentage part, we had one little
At the last meeting.
I almost
99.8, last meeting.
It was 99.9, I didn't go
And then they read the contracts.
But we have one, we had finalized, final comments, we believe, from council for US Home, and emails going back and forth today, I've not had a chance to really look at those yet, but it should resolve the final issue and get that darn thing signed. So I think we are at that point. There was some language in the deed that US
So in a word, we're close.
Oh, very, very close.
Closer than we were last time.
But we are.
Point 0.5%.
Interesting exercise, and Chelsea's been, yes, but we're almost there, so I appreciate that.
So you're saying before the end of this month?
The idea is to get this thing signed up. I'd like to have it signed tomorrow, if possible. Stony Brook has the authorization, their board to sign it. We've already, the chairman, Favia, has already signed it on behalf of the district chair, and we're just waiting for that final exhibit, which will be the form of the quick claim deed, to have language reviewed and approved by everybody, to attach that, that'll be the document, and US Home will sign it.
If it happens, can you send us an email?
Yes.
You'll hear me jumping from joy from my office.
You're doing a happy dance in our offices.
Yeah, that's the first happy dance. The second happy dance is when everything's dispersed, comes out of escrow, the deeds go here and there, and we're all good. On the Santa Luis drain downsides, we set a deadline, I sent a follow-up demand letter, as noted, to the council for Santa Luis, requesting a deadline of the 15th, last Friday. We received one today with proposals for a resolution of the matter. I've not, since it came in so late, I did not have a chance to review it yet. Chelsea has it also, we're having a staff call tomorrow at 2:00 to review it and make a recommendation as to our response back to them, and hopefully we'll have this on the board meeting in September, which board meeting would that be?
The first meeting.
Yeah, the first meeting in September, but we
September 4th.
September 4th, but we did have, again, I have not had a chance to review it yet, but we had some response, and it seems like reasonably positive, which is good. The, we talked about the amended, restated assessment methodology, we don't have, I still haven't received word from anybody about getting Russell's deposition in the other case, so it's, the Sunshine La Power
Was there anything happening there, or nothing?
Oh, that case has been resolved, yes.
The amended and restated?
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about the case that was referenced by Ms. Kalinsky as far as Russell's deposition. That case has been settled with the other entity. On the
And you've had no further correspondence with the other attorney?
Other than what we received today, that Chelsea forwarded to you, we have extra, we have hard copies where she
It came from me.
Again, objected to the methodology, et cetera. We have hard copies to hand out to the board, since it came in so late, it came in
So we haven't seen that yet.
I forwarded it to you guys when I got it this morning.
But it came in
It's in your district email, I know you don't check it.
I don't check that.
Yeah, it came in, I forgot what time, but it was, I don't know.
Yeah, it was this afternoon, early afternoon.
Yeah, so it
We'll read it as part of the record, as part
It came in, in fact, it came in Let's see here, 11:16 this morning.
Yeah, it was about quarter after 11:00.
So we have copies for the board, they can read it during the recess, between now and the budget hearing. With regards to the reimbursement for damages, the flowway, I provided documents to the attorney for the gentleman, I'll call him, and advised that the board is looking to be fully compensated for $15,000. He said he would get a response back to me by today, I don't have a response back yet. So I'll have it on the next agenda, again, as to what we recommend the board to do.
Just a truck driver?
Yes. I've had conversations with the assistant state attorney, and also a conversation briefly with the defense counsel, so hopefully they'll recognize what needs to be done. On the Zennor demand letter and warranties, we, working with the staff on August 14th, sent a demand letter out to Zennor to honor their warranties, and then the district received some responses back that not totally happy with, so we've been working on a further response letter that should go out today. I made some comments while waiting for the board meeting to start. The sharepoint, I'm not the best at.
I'll teach you in this too.
It won't work, but anyways, thank you. The easements for air raiders, Pelican Reserve, sent some materials, or Ed Hedges has been working on it, provided some materials. Some condominium documents have, on the condominium plats, easements that are in favor of the, for utilities over open areas, basically common areas, so that helps on one of the air raiders at least, and I'll work with Ed Hedges, he sent an email today, I'll work with Ed, set up a call with him to go over the other condominium documents to see if they have similar language and references on the condominium plats to utility easements that, which means we wouldn't have to chase the individual kind of associations for easements. We're hoping that will be the case in all instances. The easement for Girl Scout Lift Station, I just received the title work on that, so we'll get that to Chelsea, I've drafted the easement, and just making sure we have the proper title, title work, no encumbrances of record, and hopefully that can be ready for the next board meeting, to get that squared away. Storage, again, storage tanks, still waiting for Lee County. Chamberlain lawsuit, I've heard nothing further. On the Tetra Tech contracts, we're going to be doing, working with Chelsea, addendums to any TSA's, Task Author TAs, to include those requirements, and Chelsea's already talked to Danny about that, and that is acceptable to Danny. Gateway Greens Master Association and Transfer, received an email from Mark Adamsek yesterday, everything's good to go. I didn't have a chance to reread it yet, because I was in meetings most of yesterday, so hopefully we can record that next week and get that, all that done. The signed parcels, I've not heard anything back yet from
I just got a proposal today
I'm sorry?
I did get a proposal today from a commercial broker to present to the board and PPAC at their next meeting.
That's all, unless the board has any questions of any manners.
I have none.
Nothing?
Thank you.
Just a general question, our pilot project on the water meters, how's that going?
I was going to ask that question.
Yep, it is, it's going good, all of the pilot meters are in place. At this point, we're just kind of
Not only the black boxes, but the green things that go in the black boxes?
Yes.
Okay.
So right now, we are just letting them do their thing. We have, out of the three vendors, we, one of the vendors has had to come out a couple times and replace the meters. All of these things, we're taking into account and
Meters?
Meters. We are evaluating as part of the pilot period, which should be, it'll be nine months from July, if we need to make that shorter, because there's an apparent issue or, you know, apparent winner.
Somebody fails.
Yeah, we will consider that. One of the things that, as part of this whole Zennor discussion that we've had with warranties and sending equipment and the time delays and receiving it back, we're manually reading half of our system, and our warranties, half, half of our system.
Our legacy system.
Yes. And considering our warranty amount, we'll have to pay 30% out of pocket, starting 1-1-2026.
As to those meters installed under the original project agreement?
Yes.
We start running into the fraction deal.
Yes.
And it accelerates quickly.
So we're having some internal discussions with staff about cost benefits, things like that, we're, again, we're manually reading half of our system, but the pilot project is going well. We do have meetings with Arcatus every two weeks. We have the evaluation criteria, which, as we go through, like when they, when they came and installed the meters, they had, each vendor had a work order management system, so we're evaluating that, and, you know, what did we like, what didn't we like, things like that, so it's going, it's going well.
We might want to have to, we might have to accelerate that nine-month period.
Yeah, we're talking internally here in a couple of weeks, so.
If we're running into those kind of numbers where we're, what is that, half is 4,000 meters? That's ridiculous.
Take three to four weeks for our
And how many pilots do we have on each?
We have 103 per vendor.
103, so 309.
About 300 and some.
Because I just can't remember, they're different No, as far as product, different meters?
Three different, they're all the same
All the same meters.
Ultrasonic meter, like that type of meter, but three different suppliers.
So when you said we had had some that we returned back, we should go through a return with all three vendors, so we can test
We're doing
Return, and so part of that is, I'm sure we're monitoring all the performance, but we should go through all the different things that we would, we would experience during
Normal.
A post, and make sure that we're testing each one and
Were you in my call?
What you already talked about?
Yeah, we talked about
I'm sure you already addressed these, and I'm kind of speaking out loud.
Well, we talked two different things, we talked about doing a standard, like a warranty claim, going through it, even if the meter's not bad, just to see what the process is and what their turnaround time is, but then also sending a couple, a handful of meters off of each vendor to get them tested for accuracy and see, and get feedback from a third-party vendor, so we do have all of that in the works in the coming months.
So if, once we, let's just fast forward to post, post-installation in the new environment. If something goes wrong, if there's an emergency or a failure, does that, do you perceive that being a vendor responsibility or a staff responsibility? Or does it depend?
It really depends on the situation, I mean, because it could be a homeowner issue, but if it's a mechanical failure, it would be staff engaging with the supplier and going through the warranty process.
That's, well, warranty's one thing, but I'm talking about if there is a failure or a problem that's, let's say, a tier-one issue that has to be addressed, I would love to see, or I'm sure you probably thought about this as well, but what's the escalation process, who manages it, what is the turnaround time? So like, there's critical times where timing is of the essence, and there's a failure or something that goes wrong, just
Well, typically, I mean, in a perfect environment, we would have stock sitting on our shelf, and we could go triage it ourself and then send the bad one off.
There would be, for most cases, we would manage internally.
We've done for the last nine years.
Yeah, so in most cases, we would triage internally and manage internally, okay.
When we reach the end of the trial, are 204 going to come out and we will have uniformity in the entire community?
Absolutely.
The ones that are in are all sending the signals back here and we're reading them?
Well, they're all cellular.
Oh, okay, they're all cellular.
Yes.
And there hasn't been an issue with that?
As of today, no.
Great, great.
There are not, to my knowledge, there are not, no other cellular meter companies, LCU, Kit Corral, I think we're going to be one of the first to kind of go into that market, but it's, that's not, bigger cities are doing this already, and rural cities, rural counties are doing it, because it takes them an hour to get to, you know, go read, so this is not new to the nation, it's new to the county.
So we're nine months in?
No, we are like three months in.
Three months in, right, okay, so another thing is, not that I want it to happen, but an adverse event would also be another
Which was hurricane season.
Good test.
What, you want a hurricane?
No. But I do want to test our meters thoroughly.
You want a one or a two, nothing more.
Okay.
Go fill your water meter box with water.
All right, so then
That boy, so that could possibly happen, so.
Or ants.
Future poor business, agenda management, anything?
The only, the only thing is, I'm, like we do every year, I'm kindly requesting that we cancel the second September meeting. The month of September, we do our annual reviews for staff, so, and it's year-end, so Laura's trying to wrap up purchase orders, and we're trying to wrap up projects.
Budget loaded in.
That's the 18th?
Yes.
Cancel the 18th meeting?
Would it make any difference if we canceled the 4th, because I'm not going to be here for the 4th? All those things being equal, still gives you a couple of weeks.
I probably won't be here on the 18th, because I may leave on the 19th or the 18th, I'm not sure.
We, I think, as of right now, Bob, I mean, we might have one or two items, there's nothing really pressing, Tony, unless we have a, any settlement things.
Because from the standpoint of the agreement for the Stony Brook Roads, everything, it's in substantially final form, it's just a matter of making those last little minute tweaks, that's all ready to go.
And all I'm saying is, if you're going to get two weeks, could you make the two weeks, the first two weeks, not have a meeting on the 4th, but have it on the 18th? So I won't be here the 4th, then I won't be here the 18th either.
Honestly, at this point, I would just move to, look to cancel both, because we only have
Cancel both, though.
A couple.
Obviously, just runs a caution in case something comes up.
Cancel one and then cancel that out.
Right now, and you can always cancel any time before the 4th, like a week beforehand, you can put a blast out.
Fourth of what?
September. It's two weeks from today.
Yeah, I think it would
I'll move to cancel the meeting on September 4th.
I'll second.
So we're going to have the one on the 18th?
Just schedule it, if we don't have it, we don't have it. Have one meeting scheduled, the 18th, as Carol just proposed, and if we don't need it, then we cancel it. That make sense?
I'll be here for both, too, so.
Chelsea, the Daniels Parkway though?
I mean, we have to provide comments back, it's, it's at our rate, I mean, they waited a year to submit.
I'm fine with that.
So there's a motion, I'll call for revol, there's a motion by Carol, a second by Bob, all in favor, case on the September 4th meeting, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
September 4th, cancel.
One thing that we might want to put on the, on the agenda management is, as part of the budgeting process, we did identify some potential projects, so I think we should be putting those projects on our agenda management list, that way we can
I was planning on taking all of those projects that we tabled and put, making that as your next workshop, since I didn't have anything scheduled on your workshop, so we can do the workshop, we can have a workshop and the regular meeting on the 18th. And if we need to cancel, we can cancel, but your next workshop, that was my plan to put those.
So that's possible, but what I would probably prefer, well, we can do it one of two ways, if the workshop is your purpose for us to have more conversation, because at some point it needs to be, there needs to be a, like a predefined phase where staff goes in and they kind of scope, and then they would bring it back and say, okay, here's, here's the project, here's a preliminary assessment or predefined, is this something that we, do you still want to, want to move forward on? So, you know, instead of, before we approve a project or the components, there, there needs to be some due diligence.
I was hoping to, what, my thought was to give you all the list of the projects that we kind of tabled or pushed to the side, and us talk about the priorities of those, and then
Scope.
Scope, and then doing, then coming back to you with the due diligence.
Yep, that, that sounds reasonable.
And was aeration, pond aeration going to be one of the workshops in September, as my memory says?
Uh, no, we had it scheduled, where's it at? Aeration discussion workshop is on January 15th.
Oh, not till January, okay.
Yeah, we had to do some due diligence on it still, so.
And we were also going to have the Sherman Soccer Complex as a, as an entity, the whole thing, and different projections on that, different ideas about what we could do, not going to do
All of that was going to kind of tie into this broader conversation that I was hoping to have at your next workshop.
Okay, that's fine.
I almost think that that is a work stream that comes off a much larger parks, wrecks, amenity work stream.
Majority of the deferred capital projects are parks and wreck related, so that's, I'm hoping naturally it'll come, and then if we need to one-off and have Sherman Soccer Complex as one, whatever, Fun Park as one, Ponds as one, we can do that. So I will pencil in a workshop for the 18th as well. For at 2:00.
18, 2 and 3.
Yes.
When we do those workshops and those preliminary, let's make sure that we've got all the cost data, current, and maybe even probably the last five years historical, you know.
You're talking revenue expenditures?
I'm talking, yeah, both, any capital O and M, whether it's aeration or if it's the field maintenance costs, because that, that'll help us understand, one, like what's our purpose, like improve, yes, but there has to be much more consideration when it comes to cost impact benefit.
What are we subsidizing, what are we, yep, got it, okay. That is all I had for agenda management.
All right, so can we go ahead and most provide the comments now?
Sure. The last time we had talked about, Tony, about putting paths across vacant property in the entire district to link all the district together, so people could walk and whatever, not only over by Pelican, but also in Gateway here also. not only over by Pelican, but also in Gateway here also. Have you done any more research on that? Do you have any ideas as to how we could do that?
I haven't done any more research, and then to the extent that there is existing right-of-way, like the county or existing easements in favor of the district, we could just always just go ahead and do that. Of course, we require development orders from Lee County, and perhaps Lee County would even allow that to happen in their right-of-way. But otherwise, you're going to have to ask the property owners for easements to put those sidewalks, and if it's on their property and not in any existing easements.
Is an example for Gateway, like the Linear Park, being able to, to connect-
I was thinking about from housing development to other things.
What, give me an example of-
Like C5 to the, to the Windexie parcel, right?
Yes. That's the one that-
I think Pelican was the primary conversation on that. I'm just trying to think how, in Gateway-
I would think there are other areas here in Gateway.
I don't think there's any way to connect Pelican and Gateway.
There is.
Huh?
There is, but-
I hate links.
How?
I've been.
Oh, you can get to.
It's in Bredo.
Yeah, Bostoya, Bredo.
Yeah, cut, cut over to the Boulevard.
Arborwood or the, in the future.
There's, there's opportunities, but the one that we had talked about, we have done some do, we've done some homework on. We're waiting on, I reached out to the engineer, the city engineer, last week, and I'm still waiting to hear back. But, I mean, we could always move forward with our small portion of the project to, you know, get that going, but I don't know if the city would be open to spending that money and, without the developer.
The hope was to put a lien on the property.
Right.
Since whoever owns the property is responsible for the cost of the future. So if we just open that multi-buildal path right now, complete it from C5 to Windexie, that would benefit a lot of our residents. And if there's a way to do it and not incur the cost internally, we'd like to do that.
I don't see-
I don't see that possible, no.
But we're, I'm waiting to hear back from the city still, so.
The two parcels, are they owned by the Dar?
No, it's owned by a private developer.
I think the Cameron folks, isn't it?
Cameron, yeah.
Cameron Partners, I believe.
Teak.
Well, a conversation with them could be appropriate. You're going to have to pay for it sooner or later. Can you do it sooner?
We can track them down, we can always ask.
Yeah, I think they're out of Naples, if I'm not mistaken, but-
Call them up, your neighbors.
Okay.
So are we good, are we putting that on Tony's list then?
Yes.
To research further?
Contact owner and just see about their appetite for doing it.
So maybe in, in about two months, we could have, or either put that on your lawyer list of things to do, or let's have an update on that in a couple of months.
Your agenda management.
And if I get a response from the city, I'll be sure to bring it to the next meeting.
I got three. First of all, did anybody get over to meet with LCSO and Lieutenant Vaughn?
I did not.
I went over there for an hour and a half with my access control director, and that is one hell of an operation that they've got. Unbelievable, unbelievable. So I'm, any doubts I had and the benefits of that, of what it can provide for us, I'm all for it. Although I did learn one thing, they are not going to give anybody any information about anybody that they have. But I found out that you can hire companies to go and get that very information that they're denying you.
So they won't give it to you directly, but they'll give it to a third party?
Yes.
Because they sell the information?
Yeah.
I just, okay.
So if you've got a guy that's-
I'll let you chime on this, I'm sure you might want to know.
If you have somebody that did something, let's say, wrong in your community and they get $100 fine, and you got to pay a guy $250 to go find out who it is, I don't think I'm going to chase that goose very often. That, that's just not going to be advantageous. But if you have a property damage or something serious, there is a way to get the information. So, but the whole thing was, it was immensely impressive. They've got a four-foot by four-foot TV monitor or a GPS screen that you can shrink that down and I could read a newspaper on my back lanai. It's scary how, you know, you watch some of these movies and you have the big, big dad looking at you. It's over there on that sheet. So it was impressive.
Budget for giving greens here.
Still ain't worth $40,000 to me.
My, my, okay, that's all you have?
Well, no, no, I got, the next one is the FPL-
So, Ed, what about an independent party? Let's say, let's say a couple's going through a divorce and one of the parties wants to find out where the husband's been going and can they-
This is a license plate reader only.
No, can an attorney go in and ask for records?
No, I don't think it's an attorney. The way they talk, it was a certain vendor.
It's only the person that, it's only the access control vendor or the person that own, that is paying for it.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
I didn't know that it, I didn't even know that it existed, that a party was there, that you could go and get that very information that they don't get there.
Private investigator.
But they can. Anyway.
A private investigator could?
The next one, FPL easement between Gateway Greens and Stony Brook on the left-hand side is beginning to look like a jungle. Is, who's the contractor mowing that?
We do. We mow it internally.
It had been mowed since Christ was a child.
That's not true. They're moving up the FPL easement and they're getting-
It's four feet high.
I know, they're getting there.
It looks horrible.
Christ died at 33.
Huh?
Christ died at 33.
Yeah. So I mean, that's how long ago it was. I mean, you go up there, it looks horrible.
It's on, it's on their list to mow.
Okay, good. And then the last one was, did we get a, an official, because our HOA is doing the same thing right now, budgeting. And the issue is, is FPL costs. My, I've got a board member that's telling me that the FPL rate increase is minimal.
We just got notice yesterday.
They dropped a very significant cut to what they were projecting.
Two percent, two and a half percent?
Last I heard, it was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 10. Now I'm hearing it's down to half of that. Have you guys heard anything?
We didn't get a percent, they gave us a dollar amount, so.
What's it?
What's like the total? They said the total they asked for was this and it's only going to be this.
About 4% someplace, but-
Yeah. I budgeted enough to cover that, so.
I heard, I, I put in my budget over at the community, 10%, and then I was challenged today that it, people were being told that it was half. And I said, okay, where are you getting that from?
I didn't see half, maybe three-quarters, but not half.
So that's all I got.
And then, just looking at this agenda, I don't see where we have an agenda item to officially adopt the budget after the public hearing and we've closed the public hearing. Can we add an agenda item?
I think that's A.
It's 15A. It's 15A.
15A adopts the budget.
Hearing and-
There are two public hearings.
The last line says adopting the FY 25, 26 budget.
Okay. So you're going to do A before B?
Yes. You have to adopt the budget first to find out how much money you're going to spend and what revenues you need, and then you adopt the assessments and levy the assessments to fund the budget that you've adopted.
It's always like that, Carol.
Okay. So the public hearing is completely separate?
There are two, there are two public hearings. One is to consider and hear comments on objections to the budget. The board adopts the budget by resolution. The second public hearing is to consider the levying imposition of special assessments to fund the district's budget.
But don't you have to open the public hearing, have the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then have an official vote?
No. Yeah, on the budget, yes. And then you do the same thing for the assessments. Yes.
Okay.
Believe me, Tony, Tony will guide us through it.
Chelsea and I will do that.
All right.
No, Chelsea and I will do that, yes.
Bob?
Well, just the Lee County thing, I mean, I'm sure it's razzle-dazzle and wonderful, but it doesn't gain anything to our individual residents. I mean, now, if I want to know that my husb, my husband, my wife, whatever's leaving the community, yeah, we've got cameras in Pelican, so we don't need this. So if there's a monthly rental, I would propose, you guys want to continue over here, I don't want to pay for that, because it doesn't do a thing for our residents.
Well, I just have two things. I asked Vaughn for just two data.
What was the budget?
For next year, for Lee County Sheriff's Office to install the cameras, because they have a budget for that. And I was labeled during the last meeting to pull it up that they had $260,000 set aside for 2025, 2024. So that was one question, and I never got an answer for, and I just follow up with him now, and then he's pretty much told me to have a, a records request. And I really felt like, thank you for telling me now. So that's going to tell you how I'm going to decide on this. Second question I had is, I want to know what the locations of those cameras are, because that's something that we, we can find out. Because if we're paying Lee County, if we're paying our taxes and all those cameras are being allocated on zip code 33901, then there is no need here. You know, I, I just need to know what they are. And, and, and two years ago, when they started with this, it was $260,000, it's a quarter of a million dollars. So I want to know why they're so hesitant in telling us the dollar amount that they have set aside for this. And, and, and if they, if they don't, if they truly don't feel like they need to add anything here, then why should we?
Yep. It's, it's a bait and switch. We're going to give you something for free, and all of a sudden, it's not free. Now, if they want to know where the vehicles are coming and if they're looking for a kidnapped car and all that kind of stuff, yeah, I could see that the camera system will trigger a response. But it doesn't do squat for a Gateway Greens resident.
And I think the, the final question we had was, from all those, how many did it actually went through, you know, and I got an answer, this is what I got, nothing.
Hundreds of thousands of kits that they had, well, nobody can respond to that, so I'm very reluctant.
I had to follow up during the meeting, say, hey, where's the data? Maybe I missed an email, so.
A lot of money for very little. And I'm sure it is impressive, Ed. I, I can understand that entirely. But I don't want to pay for it.
And I think it's a very good tool for them.
I agree with that.
And they should pay for it.
That's right.
Because we already pay taxes.
So that's what I wanted to know. Now, if they came and say, look, my, I'm strapped on budget, and then this is all the money, I'm willing, and then maybe they can rethink all that. But it may, just the way they went about, the, I really feel like they really pulled, they waited last minute. There is definitely a benefit, that is not what I'm arguing. I want to know how much money that I'm already paying for this and why I'm not getting any benefit. Not, because we're getting the benefit because we are, we are paying on the CDD. What is the benefit that I'm getting for all the money that I'm paying? I heard nothing. And now, I literally was told five minutes ago, oh, it looks like you need to do a records request.
I will move to delete $40,000 from the 2026 budget in the line item that would cover the cameras from-
Do that later.
Do that during the budget meeting.
We'll do that later.
Not right now.
Yeah, I think the good time is, a good discussion now would be at the budget hearing.
And just on that piece, I think we're all in agreement, but is there, is there any additional benefit that, that we could, we can go, as far as like additional patrols, or is there, you know, is, is there something to offset that? And that's just a hypothetical.
We had that, we had the details, so I think it was a 40-
No, I think we reduced it to 25,000, just based on what we used.
But my point is, if we're paying for the cameras, is there another indirect benefit that we could get as a result? Hey, you know, we'll, we'll-
And we budget, we budget and pay extra money to the city of Fort Barre for the patrols because we can't get them for Lee County.
In fact, our safety and security committee doubled the amount in their budget.
40,000, I think, yeah.
I think it was 20,000 a year and we doubled it to 40,000.
And we never spend it, because we can't get the cops. We can budget it, but they won't come.
They've been better lately.
Yes, Doug. I mean, I look at Tony and I say, yes, Doug.
You know, one thing I'm finding out, one of my other districts, because of the Sheriff's Department, Manpower Schools back in session, the whole nine yards, FWC and the Florida Highway Patrol will also offer some services. So sometimes you can contact with them also. Once I get the information, I can find that too.
Highway 82 is considered, and then 75.
If you want to later-
How often, okay, is it my turn?
Yeah, sorry.
How often are we doing road assessments? Because I feel like, you know, there's, you know, there's some issues on the road. Is, is staff evaluating that, or are we just waiting for, just any roads, any of our roads within our gateway domain?
Safety and security.
County roads. I'm primarily thinking about, talking about county roads.
Because Gateway Boulevard is starting to look horrible.
Yeah. I mean, that's my point. It's like, I feel like they're, I'm constantly hitting a pothole, or there's, there's some damage. And I understand the stipulations around the side and the, all that kind of stuff. But I feel like, it's like, we need to do, at some point, we need to do a road assessment internally to identify, okay, here's, you know, here's road conditions, here's all the trouble areas and, and supply that are working in conjunction with DOT around, doing an assessment.
Find out what their plan is.
Send pictures to Cecil.
Yeah. I mean, so.
We do those all the time. I mean, I, I noticed a pothole forming in front of Timber Ridge the other day, and I put in an RFA, and then the president of Timber Ridge emailed and said, hey. So we're, and then I know within the last couple of months, Mark's team has gone out and done some repairs that are our responsibility because of the oak trees. So I don't know if it's on a set schedule, but we are monitoring.
One thing that, if we're not doing this now, we probably should, maybe once a quarter, we should set aside time with Cecil or someone, you know, of that caliber to do a walkthrough, a couple of things. Let's, Cecil, let's do a road evaluation, just so he can see, and if he has influence or if there's an opportunity for him to speak on our behalf, he's got firsthand knowledge and we're updating him. I almost feel like we should be updating key individuals on a quarterly basis of any items where there is either shared responsibility or some type of-
You've never lived in Michigan, because I think they're doing a phenomenal job of fixing the potholes. No sooner do I see it when it's gone. If you live, live in Michigan, you wait years.
Well, I don't live in Michigan, I've never lived in Michigan.
Until you lose a car, I did.
I live in Florida. So my standard is-
Well, I'm saying, I think they're really doing a great job.
But my point is, let's, let's do a road assessment. We're doing it great. If we're not regularly communicating with Cecil on these items or, or, you know, someone like that, then we should be doing that on a quarterly basis.
We're totally boring.
Um, feedback on the lights? Have you received any feedbacks on, on the, what we've done?
We just, we've gotten a couple complaints, just that their brightness and they needed shields. We have had one complaint because the light was replaced at the Fun Park. And of course, the abutting neighbors are like, why are you illuminating a park that's supposed to be closed at dark? Honestly, it's a, it's a safety concern. It is our property, we should have it illuminated. We have all of our other properties illuminated at, at night. But overall, I mean, I haven't heard any good, really, you know, good things, but just the shields and the brightness is the only negative feedback I've received.
And then, we have a Phase 2 project, correct?
The only, no, because it caught up. Fairway Lakes was the Phase 2 part, and it caught up.
But I thought we were doing, like-
Soccer Drive was done. The, they just told me last week that the parking lots is not feasible, so we're going to look into converting-
Wait a minute, what does that mean, not feasible?
It would cost us more to convert the parking lot lights to FPL and the long-term-
Because the, the wiring and you have to, all the infrastructure stuff.
It would have, they'd have to bore, we'd lose parking spots. So that's, that's what I appreciate with Eric Kohling, is that relationship that he's like, Chelsea, this, you should, you should not do this. So everything, Town Lakes is the only other one that we're contemplating putting lights there, because that's the only other road that is missing these lights. But other than converting the parking lot lights here to LEDs, to brighter white LEDs, I think we're, that's it.
And we'll just include lighting into-
The discussion, the capital.
Into the larger, just part.
Yes.
Because we're going to have to talk about field lighting as well, so that becomes, and just since you're talking about that, from the park perspective, lighting options for the common park, Commons Park, that, because that's net new, boring, so that, there's no issue there.
No. The only, the only thing that has changed is, we had originally contemplated going to FPL for the bollards, which are along the walkways. The monthly cost on those is, it's, we could purchase them and install them for much more reasonably priced than we would pay monthly with FPL. So that-
And walking around the paths.
Yeah. But the parking lot lights, those are going in for FPL, but the bollards, we're contemplating owning those outright.
And if there was lighting for the amenities?
The court sports are, they're, those are going to be owner, we're going to own those as well.
Timers and things like that.
Yeah, all of those.
Okay. That's all I got.
Right. I have one more thing, then.
Yeah. Does anybody driven down West Links Drive toward Daniels at about 2:10 every day?
Can you drive?
That is a disaster.
School's not in session, yeah.
And we're going to get sued on this.
It's a parking lot.
That school, it, it's worse than a parking lot. If you're going out from Gateway Greens, leaving and exiting and trying to get onto Daniels, you cannot drive in your lane. You have to drive in the turn lane. Somebody's going to get killed out there. This has got to stop. It, they're even queuing now on Daniels Parkway.
I saw that today on the way in. I saw that today in the way in.
They're queuing out as many as eight, 10 cars, and then on the road coming in from town on Daniels to turn into West Lakes, they're queuing in the turn lane, it's crazy.
This is where.
The DOT and Lee County Sheriff's Office, I can sign that for you.
But they won't do it.
That is, but, but, so then.
They need to go out there.
So this is the great thing.
We control what we can control, so that's tit for tat.
They need to, they need to tell the school there will be no more queuing, no more. If you're gonna queue, queue on your property or no queuing, would just go out there and tell the people, keep moving, keep moving, and let them run a circle and go all the way down to Tree Line, all the way up to 82, all the way back down, and run back. By the time they get back, the kids should be able to get the.
I think this is, this is what you were speaking to.
This is ridiculous, it's dangerous.
If we're, if, if the county is looking for us to help enhance their capability through cameras and what we spend, then at least they should be maintaining the rule of law in our community on a daily basis.
I know.
There's a tit for tat there that's just not happening.
It's not happening, and I have never seen it so black and white as I have seen it today.
That road's ours, that's not the county's road.
That segment of West Lakes.
We didn't give that to them, why can't we go out and just put signs that says no standing?
Tree, Tree Line is, is one lane, also going into that elementary school.
You've got a cop over there, or two.
Well, well, yeah, but they don't do anything to stop them from queuing up.
But you've got two lanes.
But you really only have one, because it's what is parked.
We only have one, and it's now, now, down the bend.
So the only way that you may get enforcement, and I'm thinking 100%, you get, you get five, is if we pay for detail and have somebody over there, but we don't mandate.
Yeah, like a church does.
We don't mandate tickets, we mandate them to be there, and it's at their discretion, their leisure, and.
Why can't we go out on our road and put signs, no standing, no stopping?
We can put them out, but it's a question of enforcement.
But who's gonna enforce it?
But then it becomes a question of enforcement, yes.
We had, I, we had them put it out like eight years ago.
It's put up front of the fire station, and they don't do it.
I'm thinking of a word here, like, leverage? You've let your $40,000?
We want us to have the $40,000 regardless, I'm not gonna give you $40,000 to do that.
Well, somebody, what I'm worried about is somebody, somebody getting out there and pulling out in one of those deals and hitting somebody, and guess who's gonna get sued, it's our road.
Because what happens as well, not only is it, is it traffic, but what happens quite a bit is kids getting in and out of those vehicles, and that's where the dangers, that's what's really dangerous.
I guess, I guess from the standpoint, if your concern is the, a line of sight, I'll call it, coming out of the intersecting roadways.
You can see nothing.
That's right, I mean, if you have the people who are standing in the road up to the, you know, the next road intersects, then you can't see, that becomes.
There is no line of sight.
So they're blocking the line of sight, they're actually, so I guess the question is, and we can look at it and work with Stephen too, from the standpoint of appropriate signage to put up in that area, and just say, no stopping, standing, or parking, maintain, you know.
We don't have signs there, because.
To try to minimize liability, that's all.
Because I know we installed, like, eight years ago, I know I had a hissy fit about the charter school, and I know install the signs there.
The school, I believe the charter school put them in.
We have the signs.
We did, shoemaker, shoemaker.
The elementary school.
Oh, okay, so.
We have the signs on the junior, senior high school, but not on the elementary.
That's what I wanna know, okay.
Yeah, so that's something I think might be worthwhile exploring, to at least try to minimize liability, but the enforcement is with the sheriff's department.
We got the high school, the charter school, they, they hired.
They're not as bad, they're required.
They hired someone come in for, for a while last year, and they had someone out there, and it got much better.
It's part of the agreement that we have, and they also re, they revamped their parking lot, the situation adjusted it also for the high school here, so, you know, it took a while, but they're doing it, but the elementary, it's just.
There's no police, I drove it all around, there are no police at the elementary school.
What approach might be to look at the DO for the elementary school, because they still need development orders, what does the site plan require for parking and/or, or traffic circulation?
Look at that, all of it, I think it's really important.
Chelsea, you wanna have.
It's gotten, it's gotten absolutely ridiculous, they come out of the school, come back up Commonwealth Drive, then they split, and there's a queue that goes to Daniels Parkway, and then there's a queue that comes up to Commerce Lakes Drive, and then that queue turns and heads toward Arborwood, it's insanity.
When I was coming in today, there were probably 30 cars on Daniels Parkway, facing west, yeah, on the north side of Daniels Parkway.
And the police just looked the other way.
Now, I will say, when we had conversations, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, with all of the schools in the school district, the elementary school, both elementary schools were the most responsive in trying to be proactive and work through it. Now, it's a new school year, we're a week in, two, we're on week two, I would like to start with having, just sending an email saying, hey, you know, you need to, you need to maintain your traffic.
I would prefer that you just go meet with the principal, have someone from staff. Now, the elementary school, they did, they did engineering changes, I mean, they put forth an effort and some money was spent there.
Yes.
You know, that was significant, but.
I don't wanna push so much to this elementary, because if we all remember, they were willing to take care of the road to stop that.
And we use their parking.
And we told them no, because we didn't want to this, you know, so, we complained, they come with solution, they wanted to meet us halfway, and we told them no, and then we tried to take over back, and then it was too late, so, but I don't see as much problem here as I see it over there.
Yeah, I think it's the same charter school, antique charter schools USA, or Red Apple, whatever it is, there's probably those schools, so it's the same board, they're a public board, so they have public meetings, they're required to, they have, they have to operate in sunshine.
Well, they haven't expanded the school, where in the hell did all these cars come from? Does, did the buses just quit?
There are issues with.
The volume of traffic has doubled or tripled?
Yeah, because again, you may, Chelsea talked to the principal, but also you may wanna end up trying to get on an agenda of the charter school board, when they have the board meetings.
When you block a road, and that's what they're doing, because we, we've had, they're,